Two thousand twenty four seven P M. We acknowledge and respect the indigenous peoples within this traditional lands meeting today. Now that the meeting's been called to order, adoption of the agenda, that the draft agenda of regular meetings seven twenty four Tuesday, May fourteenth, two thousand twenty four be adopted as amended from council procedure by law six six three two thousand fourteen. Schedule A to include a new business section and a public question period. Okay, so yeah, council. Any additions? All in favor? Period. Delegation's now new business now adoption of the minutes that the draft minutes of the regular council meeting oh six twenty four of Tuesday, April twenty third, two thousand twenty four be adopted as presented. Councilor Neil, councilor Keith Lee, any corrections on those minutes? Here and then, all in favor? The draft minutes of special council meeting in Monday, April twenty ninth, two thousand twenty four be adopted as presented. Counselor Keith Lee. Any corrections on those minutes? Here and then, all in favor?
In favor.
The draft minutes of the special council meeting of Monday, May sixth, two thousand twenty four be adopted as presented. So, Counselor Neil, Counselor Keith Lee. Any correction on those minutes? Here and then, all in favor? Here. Referal from delegations now, referral from prior meetings now, policy development review now. Bylaw development review, the zoning bylaw amendment for small scale multi-unit housing, bylaw number seven four. Seven five four, two thousand twenty four. So, just because we have a little bit more public here, just to give a really quick overview on that. Is that this came to council, I don't know, just three weeks ago or my, uh, four weeks ago or something like that. All this is, is it's not an overarching for full entire zoning. It is just for secondary suites in existing dwelling. So you can have a secondary suite in your house. Everywhere now in town, that's in all provincial areas. And it is the mandate that was brought down on the provincial government. So it's just a piece of the zoning.
So why is the word waived?
Sorry, you, you can't talk weird. But I will explain. So the provincial government has made it that, Matt, that we are not allowed to have public hearings anymore. Put out there to tell people that we don't have to have a public hearing. And then we still have the opportunity to respond to it. If there's any concerns or anything that, so we're not doing anything more than what we are absolutely mandated to do right now. Is allow secondary suites. There's a whole bunch of other stuff that will slowly come out of the woodwork and we will work on. So if you're, can, the zoning, pay attention in the next, I don't know, six months to that. Because it will affect, you know, you might not have been able to have a secondary suite at your house. And, and you didn't want your neighbors to be able to, but now everybody can. Okay?
It's a name to the chair, so just for like clarification, it's federally mandated that council, sorry. Okay, apologies. But it's mandated that we don't have those public consultations like we used to be able to have. It's not village someone, so we're, we're just following the rules. And I know it's, I don't want to say it's not fair, but.
Yeah. So councils had discussion zoning, but we'll do that, the zoning bylaw amendment, small scale, multi-unit housing bylaw number seven five four, two thousand twenty four begin the first reading. Now, do you guys have any other questions now that you've had a month done them all over? Any other questions on? Yeah? Okay, all in favor? The zoning bylaw amendment, small scale, multi-unit housing bylaw number seven five four, two thousand twenty four begin the second and third reading. Again, any questions? All in favor? Okay, so fireworks, that council gives express permission to the fire department to set off fireworks within the village limits on July first, two thousand twenty four for candidate day celebration. Any questions on that?
If I'm need the chair, oh, oh, sorry, council.
I just wanted to kind of mention, I saw that Truville is kind of moving towards the drone light show. And I think that's a really interesting option to kind of look at before, it'd be kind of neat to just kind of see how that goes. And look at that for our future with all the fire risks and everything, it's going to be. Yeah.
Yeah, if I may, I definitely would second that, especially now that we require apparatus repair. Might be, might be an opportunity to find out what the costs are and see if there's something we could do and repair at the same time and then go back to fireworks next year.
So I'll just say last year, when we didn't have staff doing all the stuff, I looked into it and for an eight minute show was fifteen thousand dollars. But there was no business, no companies in B C that did it. It was only Alberta, now there's actually two companies in B C that have it. So it will be, it is, it is something that will, you know, we put, last year we put it four thousand dollars towards the fireworks, which was a big year. We don't usually put that much forward, so four thousand is a long ways away from fifteen. And, and they have many different things, so there could be sixty drones up to two hundred drones. So it'll be interesting what Beaver Valley does and to see if they'll tell us what the case.
And that's, it'll become more reportable one, so I don't know, it'd be interesting.
Anything else? All in favor? Traffic bylaw six six zero two thousand fourteen, that councils will throw closures within the village limits on July first for candidate day parade. And staff applying for any necessary permits for the road closure. Counselor Keith Lee, Counselor Cox. So just for clarification, when you guys look at your maps, it is, the parade is only gonna be closed up to the legion. Once the parade is done, the rest of Stayward from the legion for that block will be closed for all the rest of July first. Okay. Okay? Got it, questions on that? And any, any questions? All in favor? Business license by law six four five, two thousand and thirteen. So before we put this motion on the table, because I'm thinking that that's why some people are here. Let's have a conversation. Do you want to talk a little bit, this is about, people have asked about bringing in food vendors, food, yeah, mobile vendors?
So when this request came to, to staff, asking if there would be a mobile food vendor as part of the candidate celebrations, we looked at the bylaws that you have in place and, and the policies that you have in place. And we're uncertain. I, I certainly don't know, previous conversation, you may have had some, but the way your bylaw, business license by law fits, I mean, that's very much a category for ongoing mobile food truck, but there's also the special event category where typically if, and, and, but it wasn't, I wasn't certain as a C E O if this just automatically fit under your special event application, because every, everybody handles that differently. If it fell, if it falls under being a special event, able to apply under a special event, then it would come to staff and if council affirmed that tonight that it did. Then we would take an application under a special event and it would just be processed like always, it would have an agreement and, you know, the fees that they need to pay for whatever, the electricity, et cetera. And then we would process it that way. If it didn't, council could even have further discussion on if you want it and retain it, if you just, if we just deny it. But you wouldn't be approving a special event application here, because that's a whole process, because there's a lot of things for some, for mobile food truck to, the criteria to fit. But you would at least give us a guidance that should they fit all the criteria that we have, that it would be allowed.
Okay, anybody have any questions on that? Any comments?
Counselor, I mean, to the chair, I have a comment and it's not really regarding this motion, so.
There's no motion on the table.
Okay, so. I apologize for what's out of bounds, but if there's such a drive for the public to have these mobile food trucks or vendors here. Whether it be candidate or not, maybe we should think about holding competition, having food truck challenges, having different vendors showcase themselves in Sanmore at some point in time. Not saying candidate, I definitely agree with what we want to do here. But I know there's a willing, willingness from the community to add different food trucks, food vendors, food services in the community. Could be an opportunity for Sanmore to step up and, and do the precedence and kind of competitions and food, food truck vendors. I think it'd be a really cool venue. I would definitely support candidate if, if people want to be vendors.
Counselor Cox?
It's a different topic, but how about the pancake breakfast and all the other businesses in the area? Will it take away your business for other people or?
So, are you, so what?
That, that depends if you're going to go into, again, with the idea of the way your special events is worded, it doesn't, I mean, there's usually also some criteria as far as it being special events. Only in your special event category, it doesn't talk about looking at other competitions. So if, if council has hesitation that maybe it's not a topic that's been discussed enough, then we should bring it back to council with, you know, more on the subject itself. Because the question that's really on the table tonight is whether or not it simply fits under the special events category. If you've written it like, if special events isn't purposely to say it doesn't fit the usual, you know, criteria, because it's a special event. Then, then you wouldn't debate the pros and cons of mobile food trucks long term against other businesses. Special events are usually different in that you usually have tons of people and, and competition on a short term thing isn't such a big deal as it is definitely on the longer, on things. There is that option, if council feels like it needs more discussion, the actual subject itself, not just saying it fits under that our criteria for special events. If you feel that the subject itself needs more, then it should come back with a full report on the pros and cons and, you know, the ways of handling it.
Yeah, I, I would feel like it would fit under the special events, it would be a nice addition to have a candidate day and.
Okay, I'm gonna just, I'm gonna go in a whole different, you guys, I hear what you're saying. How, I think, I think that we need to hear. I understand where there's some want of food vendors to come on July first. My concern would be for our community that we have, it is our one main event for the whole entire year. So we have that ability for nonprofits to raise their money that, that gets put back into our community, whether it's through groceries or, or whatever. Whatever they, however they put it back into our community, ball teams that raise money, different stuff like that. And then we also have businesses, and we have four new businesses that have food this year. So that's my worry is that, that allowing, because this, this doesn't put, and, and I guess maybe we can do that. Is, is put an amount like that we only allow one food truck or, or whatever in the next part, but there's no cap on that. So that's, and that's just my opinion, is those are my concerns around it, that's all. Counselor, you?
When I go to other events, like the special events in like May days and Truville, it's, there's so nice having some more variety of options. And yes, I totally understand that there's like the legion and all the, these places that make a lot of money and they do go back into our community. But sometimes, yeah, there's just, it's nice to have some options for people and I think it would be worthy into discussing that.
Oh, you had, I just wanted to clarify, again, it's a, this is a bit of a tricky one, because you're not really debating the pros and cons of food trucks. What you're looking at is the wording in the bylaw to actually decide whether or not you have the authority to say no or yes. Because that's where I struggled, because when I read the special events section of the bylaw, and I talked about concessions and all these things. I didn't necessarily think that I didn't have the authority to say no, because it seems to me that it fits. That's why we brought it back to council to say, that paragraph that we excerpt is, that's in your bylaw, does it allow it? What is your interpretation of this? Because that's what's driving it right now is in terms, because you can't override a bylaw, right? So, but it's, it doesn't say it, it doesn't say mobile food vendor, so you still can say that it doesn't, it's an interpretation.
If I may, to the chair, thank you, C E O, for that clarification on, on, and on that clarification alone, I think we should come back to council, let me review this bylaw before July first. If, if it's council's privilege that they want to have more variety in, in any vendor, we need to sit down and discuss the bylaw and make sure it's clear. If there's interpretation where it's, you understand it this way and we understand it that way, I think that leaves great clean waters and it's not a mandatory for council.
Do you want to make a motion to that? Do you want to make this motion or would you like to?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion that we review by law six four five, point thirteen, to go over the business license for mobile vendors for special events. Is that what that is? Business license by law six, two thousand thirteen. At least get clarification.
So, so are you looking for clarification of special events? Because there is a whole mobile vendor situation, but there's a separate special events, which in our interpretation, it was clear that it would be allowed. But if you don't feel that's allowed, then, so it's the special events part that people want to review of?
Well, from, sorry, through the chair, C E O, the way you explained it, you yourself who read the bylaw had uncertainty about the bylaw. And as the person guiding council, if you have uncertainties, definitely that should come back to us and we should discuss it and get clarity. If there's uncertainties or questions to be asked, we should bring it back to the table and discuss it prior to moving the motion.
So you need more clarity on your motion?
Yeah, and I apologize, I just, not, again, I just, again, to say, you know, when it says meaning, you know, concerts, events, concessions, carnival, circus, like. Yeah, so again, if you want to add in or specifically exclude, is what we would, your motion, you would be looking at very specifically dealing with mobile vendors within the special events category?
Yeah, and if I may, to the chair, I agree with, with the mayor, we really only have this one event every year, so it's, it's not like we have multiple events all the time. But, but yourself, C E O, if you have questions and you're unclear if you read the motion, then that should be brought back to the table. We should clean up the most, or sort out the motion, the bylaw, the motion, the bylaw. If there was unclarity in the bylaw, it should be brought back and we should deal with it before.
So does that make, does, what do you have for a motion that he's made?
Review by law six forty five dash thirteen, special events category to determine the eligibility of mobile. It's, yeah, yeah, which I think is the same, what, is what we're bringing here today, that's exactly what we're bringing today, but it's fine to, to look, to explore it further.
Is there a second?
When I read this bylaw, it seems like it would clearly kind of fit for me, but that's my opinion.
Well, for me, it, it does for me as well, I just, when I heard the C E O speak about it and she had uncertainties about it, that kind of made me rethink the whole idea. It's not that I'm against it, I just want to make sure that we understand.
We just use the word affirm in the resolution, because knowing it's sometimes an issue that needs a lot of discussion, we didn't want to make the, the call ourselves.
I make the motion that is on.
If, if there's not a second, if there's not a second to his motion, then, so if there's nobody that's gonna second Counselor Keith Lee's motion, then, then the table's free. Is there no second for that motion then?
I'll make the motion that council confirms mobile food vendors fit under the category of special events, business license by law number four six three, twenty thirteen. When proposing to operate a short term event such as operating K B park for candidate celebration. Further that staff, staff be authorized to execute agreements for such as applications is received.
Is there a second for that motion?
A whole second with a question. Is there a cap on vendors? Is there a cap on people who are allowed to do it or apply? Or is it wide open to everybody? I guess I'd be my question.
At this time, that again, your, your special event doesn't limit it, but it would be limited by, again, part of the application. Just to look at feasibility and to see if there's room and whether or not that would have to come back to council, given the time of year, I would already, I would doubt we would get too many more, but it definitely wouldn't just be cart launched approved.
Okay, thank you. So you have to understand though, that this is, and further that staff be authorized to, so it's not gonna come back to, to council?
Yeah. I, my question is, is it's not like, oh, we can only pick one or two. Fifteen people apply, they all meet the criteria, we're good to go. If only two people apply, they meet the criteria, that's, that was my question.
Any more? Conversation? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, accounts payable, that council received information was the accounts payable checks and electronic money transfers from April nineteenth, two thousand twenty four to May ninth, two thousand twenty four totaling forty six thousand nine hundred ninety four dollars and forty three cents. That's required council decision of old growth that the.
My question is, is how many of you support the idea? I just.
Yes. Number twenty nine.
Shouldn't that be kind of noted in a letter that?
Yeah, I mean, it'd be definitely happy with that.
Yeah. Because if something happened and they didn't, they have their whole, whole, whole own water system.
Yeah.
And if, if their whole own water system didn't work, they basically would have to send everybody home.
Yeah.
Anyways, so this is, they, this just builds one of their tick marks with I H A.
I just wanted to make sure that we are.
Absolutely. Absolutely, thank you. Any other ones? All in favor? Hey, reports?
I had one resident challenge me to go fifty Ks by the place just over down the airport, by the laundromat. And they said that the last time they drove over that dip in the road, they almost did some damage to their vehicle and they, they suggested that I give them a try and see if I would get damage upon my. So I just wanted to revisit that dip in the road and it's quite, it's increasing and becoming more dangerous. I always fall down or across.
So this is Forest Street? Dip by K B park, bigger?
Yeah, I think we got it to cancel before and then there was some asphalt spread over top, but it seems to be the deeper and further hazards.
It's nice to meet you after a challenge.
Yeah.
I apologize, I don't have anything, I would be pretty busy, um, things to calm down to, so.
Counselor, I'm sorry, it's not here, Counselor Neil, thank you for your work, do you have anything else?
No, I don't think I have anything to add, just the latter meeting and then the note about the tools that have been kind of struggling with their losing some R D As again and just short staffing. The whole issue again, unfortunately.
That was interesting when I read that, because when I had the meeting with the superintendent, she had said that she promised that she would make sure that council knew if there were struggles. So we didn't hear and I haven't heard anything, so when I read that, I was like, huh.
There's been a lot of like talk even, like the unions helping, was in contact with the parents about writing letters to the district.
If I'm need the chair and sorry, this is kind of a rough field, but I heard a couple of weeks ago through the media, that, when it come.
Get hired without the certification for lower rated pay or you get more if you are certified. So I think that's maybe what I want.
Okay, thank you.
So, they still have to have their teaching, are you to?
Yeah, it was really amazing, but okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, and then you guys have my report in front of, in front of you, I don't know if you have any questions? Any, the verbal and written reports of the mayor and council, they received information? Public question period. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, so I would just, I'm sorry, Angela Rachel's the liaison president here in town. So just going over what you said, could I just clarify that what we are about to determine is six four five dash point three needs to be clarified for the definition of what is a special event? That was what that conversation was about? Is the definition of what is a special event? Is that not right?
That, Jones, that, that motion was not brought, wasn't seconded, so they dropped that motion.
So they dropped that, so then we went into four one six one three, which was the question of just do we limit how many? Is that correct?
They passed the motion to affirm that mobile food trucks would fit in the special events category. And then the question was raised whether or not we would limit the number. And, and that, at this point in time, they wouldn't limit the number other than the, at the time of applications.
So the candidate festivities and the village of Sanmore that's been going on since nineteen fifty has just been classified as a special event. Has just been classified as a special event. Is that correct?
It's not just been classified, it's always been a special.
It's always been a special. Great, okay. All right, well. The Legion's not exactly happy. Okay, thank you.
Cindy, do you have any questions? I'm going to, on screen, Claire, do you have any question? I think you've unmuted now, Claire. Do you have any questions?
We can't hear you.
Yeah, I don't think, she's on a computer or a phone, so.
We should be able to see if she's talking, but. Yep, the sound's on.
Claire, can you hear us? Observer, do you have any questions? Claire, I muted. We should be on.
No, no questions.
No questions, thank you, okay, for them. And Claire just muted, so I'm thinking. No questions. Okay. That would be the end of our meeting. Thank you for coming.